Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Geek Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is three oh two P M. And I will call a roll call. Councilor Look is absent this afternoon and excused. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Liggins.
Here.
Councilmember Starset.
Here.
Great. And Councilmember Rodenberg might be joining. Oh, I see him joining us.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Rodenberg is here. All right, six present and accounted for. And we also have our city clerk Josh Sticker, our assistant city clerk Tiffany Element, our state administrator Katrina Kneitzon, and public works director Jeff Langhome. So thank you all for being here as well. And we'll go right into our first discussion item, which is our two thousand and twenty-two active capital improvement project schedule update. And this report is by public works director Jeff Langhome.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review our update for the schedule and the public outreach matrix. I am going unless there any questions are at the beginning, I'm gonna just share my screen and we'll jump into it.
Jeff, if there's questions, would you like me to answer or would or call on people or would you like to call on people?
Um, I'll try and keep a prize of that and follow them. Yeah.
I never know what you all can see on your screen, so.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point. I I'm at my desk and I got lots of screens, so.
Well, if you miss one, I'll I'll call on them.
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Get focused.
Sounds good.
Okay, let's see, here we go. Okay, hopefully you can all see my screen now. Okay. All right, well, I'll again highlighted items are the items that have changed since our last time we met and talked about this. So I will probably touch on all of these, but I will just address or go into detail maybe a little bit more on the ones that are highlighted. So Scanty Net Shed. We are needing to take a little more time to finalize the structural design. We've received input from Scanty Net Shed Foundation. We've received input, of course, from the structural engineer. They prepared some designs. We need to wrap up and and have conversations to make sure we're on same page about what that design's gonna look like. And then we're gonna go to the design review board because it's a historic structure. So also gonna be including a conversation with the state historic architect. So just taking time to get through all of those conversations. So we pushed this project out into completing by summer. Councilman Rodenber.
Do you foresee any issues or is there any conversation about controversy?
Uh, not necessarily controversy, just there. There's different ways to approach the structural repairs with different materials, steel, wood is really the key that we're looking at and wanted to make sure that that we're because we can engineer anything either way. But we do want to make sure that we are following the state historic or the state historic architects guidance and also able to do put together what will have the least obtrusive visual obtrusive impact to the structure. I mean, we could come in there and and make it, you know, up to current building code, but it would probably be pretty significant improvements that are required. And so we're trying to find that the minimalistic approach to meet the minimum code for an existing structure, but also follow the guidance that's gonna be given to us. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Next item is the sports complex phase one B. That is moving forward. We if you remember from last time, the time before, we've slid on our schedule on that. We were supposed to be submitting land use permits by now and underway, but the binding site plan has given us a little bit of a hiccup. We now have a tree survey completed. We have all the topographic survey completed. Just initial review of the tree survey. Looks like we're gonna have lots of trees remaining more than the required. We're working with planning Carl DeCemus right now to make sure that we have the to see how many trees were meeting depending on the makeup of the parcels that we're combining to do the binding site plan. We don't think we can just look at the phase one A, phase one B site and meet all the tree requirements, though we might be able to. So we're trying to figure out which parcels, if we do do a binding site plan to combine. We will likely have to do a binding site plan regardless of the tree discussion because we need to have access for phase one B on to into and out of the YMCA parking lot and then go right up to the property line between phase one B and the YMCA parking lot. And so it's just some of those land use details and binding site plan details of how to approach this and be the most successful in our application. Councilman Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. Do we have an idea now how many trees are gonna be taken out? I mean, it sounds like you've got some more saved, which is good. Do we have an idea based on our grading plans? How many are gonna be taken down?
I I'm not able to give a firm number. What I can say is is based on today's code, we're supposed to have twenty-five percent retained based on previous code, which this site, when it was subdivided, was vested to. That number was twenty percent. And there may be even some language. This is what we're working with planning on that says that we could have as low as fifteen percent requirements based off of for tree retention based off of the development agreement. That said, we're looking at having about thirty-five percent tree retention. So any way you look at it, we're going way above. But it depends on which parcels you combine. And that's the thing we're trying to work with the city attorney on and the consultant and planning to make sure that we're all on the same page about which requirement is the one that we're held to. And then how are we gonna calculate all of this? So but it's looking, it's looking positive. And we're gonna, I I don't see how we couldn't meet the minimum requirement. But like you, we've staff's been given direction multiple times. We want to go above and beyond the minimum requirement.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking would be nicer us for us to go above and beyond what's just minimum. Since it is a city driven project and it is one of our strategic goals.
Yes. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. And good, good, uh, good, I guess, to hear what these numbers are that are looking like. Especially, I think, considering, you know, the large portion of what's in phase one and V that's, you know, doesn't have trees, you know, it doesn't just doesn't look that way, you know, from the outside, but looking at the aerial shots. I think that's definitely a win. So I'm excited to see what we get to and still keep some of that, you know, natural feel. And then, of course, you know, I would imagine with these sports fields that there is some concern around, you know, sap from trees and nettles and leaves and things, you know, just not wanting us making sure that we keep enough space that we're not we're not replacing these fields too soon as well, you know, end up spending millions and dollars of resurfacing. So I don't know. I don't know. Just something for you to, I guess, to think about as you go there. Not saying cut more trees down and protect the fields, but just curious if maybe there's just with what type of materials are using of curious about the extent of the life of them.
Yeah, no, that's and that's a good concern to keep in mind. We, of course, yeah, the the trees do have a negative impact on the fields themselves with the debris and just trying to it just increases the maintenance needs for them. But we do have some buffers, some spaces in there where the trees will not be allowed to be planted just because they're hard surface or they're slopes or something and and so or we don't want roots to impact. So there's gonna be a little bit of space in there. I I think we'll be able to manage our way through that pretty easily and be successful with that. And it's just gonna be a good conversation. I'm anticipating we're gonna be in front of council once we get a better idea of where the trees are going to propose to be retained. We'll have harder, more firm numbers for tree retention. And then we'll be able to give the entire bandwidth, the entire spectrum of what will look like if if it had been developed as a business park as it was originally planned. You know, you'd be received be saving X amount of trees, but here's the minimum required per code. That's Y number. But here's the actual number the city is gonna be retaining. So I think it'll show that we're being good stewards and going in the right direction. But we're gonna have that conversation. We sell our public outreach, publicly, the open house that we're gonna have, and then we'll be before council and have that conversation. Okay, Councilor Starset, your hand might still be up just from proof before, or maybe you have another question. Okay. Commercial fishing home port, just real quick, we hope to receive ninety percent design on that project in November. We are also preparing to have a discussion with the federal agencies to find out where they are with review. It's pretty quiet on their end, and I don't like it being quiet on their end. I'd like to hear at least comments, but we're not getting that. So anyway, we still have a little bit of time in there, but now's the time since we're not hearing anything, we need to start putting pressure on and being very clear that we need their comments so that we can move this forward. Okay. Going down to city building projects, electric vehicle charging stations. That we're just moving with that one, waiting for getting a little closer when we actually have the electric vehicles that we need to charge. So those we still keep an eye out for that. We have the materials already for the charging stations. We just need to schedule the time. So it's just queued up, ready to go. Bug Visitor Center Building Rehabilitation. That one is moving along. You will see some comments in the public outreach, but we're slowly moving that forward. We're on schedule to finish the design permitting this month and be out to bid soon. Okay, Public Works Operations Center, we just received a draft from the consultant, even though George Flanagan, who had been working on this one, is now water field supervisor. He still helping us with this one, at least getting it to bid. So we're gonna be working with the architect and the building division to finalize those billing plans and get out to bid soon. Harvey Stinson, not much to say about that. Minor punch list items that may be finished by the end of this week, first part of next week. Rosedale Stinson, we've just kept this one on here because it's still taking staff time with the federal audit that's going on on that one, but we've already issued physical and substantial completion. So just gotta get through the federal audit process, which is very time consuming. It's been, we're gonna track the hours that we spent just in that, but fortunately Kyle's brought back in. Kyle's been sitting in Aaron's office all day going through that process and he's got another full day. And this is just a pre audit preparation that we need to do to get to sub- submittal for the federal audit. And then they have to actually go through the audit. Annual payment maintenance, that one wrapping up. Also, I think we're gonna be able to issue physical completion, hopefully by the end of this month. It says here the next week, it depends on if all the parts and materials come in for some ped crossings and then they're able to put in a final piece of concrete section on the sidewalk down there along Point Fosic on the east side. So that is slowly wrapping up. Mid block crossings. Councilmember Denson, you had a question on mid block crossing for Soundview at sixty-fourth. This is the one where we are holding off on that crossing because if the council authorizes as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the Soundview Drive asbestos cement water main replacement project, we would construct that crosswalk as part of the project itself.
So that would happen next year?
No, it would happen in two thousand and twenty-four. We're probably gonna design it next year and have it constructed in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Otherwise, we put it in and it would either we have to take it out a portion of it out or we put it in and it would cost us more money to bore underneath it and do construction around the crosswalk.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. That said, as soon as we get a little more staff time, we do hope to jump right into the fiftieth street. We've already received all the survey data for that earlier this year. Yes. And so it's going to be, that's the next one on our list is the fiftieth street. So Shelby and possibly our new senior engineer, if not a new associate engineer, hopefully soon, starting will we can have them tasked with getting those projects designed and then constructed. Let's see, Burnham Drive Phase One A, similar to the coarse fishing home port, we're just waiting for the federal government to give us some a response on the mitigation plan for that one. So just continue to move out the days on the calendar if we're not hearing back from the agencies. Prentice Fenimore, we have just started our conversations with the adjacent property owners. For those council members who walked that site with me, you know, we're gonna be reaching out to them. So we've just started those conversations. We hope to have those conversations wrapped up by the end of October. And then we can proceed through with the rest of the design because there's a couple of key questions we need answered based on our conversations with the property owners before we can give the consultant the green light to proceed in one direction or another.
Jeff, sorry to not raise my hand. Driving, so I'm trying to be a bit easier for me. So hand was raised, but um, just let me know if you, you know, obviously, everything everybody knows on on this call that I live on Prentice, you know, obviously know a lot of my neighbors. If there's any way I can be of assistance or you know, talking with them about it or hearing concerns or helping, you know, helping in any way to smooth conversations on things, just let me know. For the most part, I hear a lot of people being excited about it, and it's usually called out while we're walking down the street of a need for a sidewalk. But I know that there has been a few neighbors that express concern. So just would love to touch base with you and follow up on that.
Okay, well, I appreciate that offer. I may be reaching out to you by the end of next week. We're gonna have one of our most challenging conversations on Thursday. So we'll see how that goes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right, um, let's see, Thirty-Eighth Avenue Improvements Phase Two. We are having an open house for that public open house for that project on, I think it's tentatively scheduled for the twenty-fifth, yeah, Tuesday. And we're working with Laura Pettit and also Marie here in engineering is going to be posting advertisements for that on website and through the news tribune slash gateway. We're gonna be asking for input from the community based on having two alternatives. We only have one alternative right now. The consultant's finishing the second alternative. And they should have that to us by early next week, and we'll get that out there advertised with both alternatives in hand. And then after we have our open house on the twenty-fifth, we are going to be coming back to council on November third as part of that study session. We've eked this topic in to have a discussion with council and provide counsel with the feedback we heard with the open house and to look at the two alternatives. And we'll be requesting counsel to provide us some direction on which alternative to proceed with. We'll have some schematics and some rough conceptual cost estimates. Councilmember Denson.
You probably know what I'm going to ask. You and I talked a little bit about the public testimony we heard on Monday in regards to light. Can you just fill everybody else in on kind of your thoughts on that?
Yes, so there are both national standards and our current public work standards, which a lot are mostly based off of other national standards that provides some direction on lighting levels and lighting colors. So as I'm sure all of you know, LED lights can have any different color you want, essentially. Right now, the national standard is for it has been five thousand K, five thousand Kelvin color. It's the extreme bright white. That's five thousand, four thousand is just considered a white light, more natural light. And then there's soft white, which is close to the three thousand K range. There just this last week at an APWA conference in Wenatchee, in fact, it's still going on today, I believe. We have a lighting consultant that's been involved in that, and there are many. They're not, they're not, they're, I guess they're nonprofits. I was, I'm understanding they're 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 groups. They're not they're advocacy groups that are wanting to have the light levels turned down to like eighteen hundred K. That's extremely yellow. And it's the the question is, is you we've were trying to find that balance of having dark skies, but also sufficient lighting levels to actually improve safety. Brighter the light, generally, the better safety or better lighting you have to redo to improve safety. So there's, like I said, there's groups that are trying to lower it, and there's the national standards folks who are trying to keep it at four thousand K. So we are going to keep a close eye on this. If the standards change, we can decide whether or not we want to follow those standards. I can tell you that just from an operations and maintenance side, it's easy for us to have an inventory of lamps that are all at the same lighting level. And for example, maybe you have, I mean, the the most challenging part would be if we had lighting levels on classified roadways or different levels of classified roadways at different of different colors. And then we would have to have two, three different sets of lamps that also have different sets of wattages associated with them or lumens lumens because that's the other part of the equation. We have to have a minimum level of foot candle, which is the brightness level on roadway surfaces around a light to meet standards. And so we not only need to talk about colors, but we need to talk about lumens or output from the lamps. And so once you change, we have enough lamps in inventory to change out the occasional lamp that burns out at specific lumen levels, but those are all at four thousand K. If we have to then increase our inventory, then it becomes an operations and maintenance issue, and we need to store that much more in our our streetlight storage area. Councilman Rodenber.
It would, it seemed to me that if we did anything less than what we know is the most safe lighting, we would probably be liable should there be an accident caused by a lack of lighting. I think safety should be paramount. You know, I appreciate the the idea of light pollution and trying to prevent it, but vehicle train safety should be number one in my opinion. And the city should not put themselves at risk lowering or going beyond any accepted standard.
Well, and to your point, when when these types of standards change, the the standard can change, but then you can just wait to see what the courts say when they're challenged. Whether that's because an accident occurred or because of potential accident. And so if we were on the forefront, yeah, that's probably we would probably be involved in those those challenges, those legal challenges, or we can wait and keep our own standard as you're alluding to and wait and see where the courts go in that that direction.
That's certainly the best route to me.
Thank you. Councilor Liggins.
Actually, I think Councilmember Rodenberg just asked the question. I was just wondering when we veer from the national standards, if that puts us at a legal liability risk. And it sounds like if you're in the forefront, it potentially does.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilor Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. Those two national standards, though, are not necessarily mandatory, right? I mean, they're not. It's not a legally binding. It's just the best engineering practice. There are other standards out there. Yeah. So I just ask that you keep an open mind on this. So if there's something out there that would still meet the approximate lumens, even though the Kelvin may be a little bit lower, that would probably be good. I think I think the 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 comment that was made at the last city council meeting was actually fairly good. And also probably the last thing is these LEDs, assuming that we get good ones. And you know, like the other ones that don't burn out, we don't need a whole large number of anything on stock, right? I mean, these LED lights last for quite some time.
They're supposed to, yes.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
They're supposed to, yes. They're supposed to last for quite some time, and we 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 wouldn't have to be changing them very often at all.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, so yeah, so Thirty-Eighth Avenue Open House on the twenty-fifth and then study session on the third. Okay. Uh, let's see, Canterwood Water Inter- Water Main Intertie. We are just following through with both Washington Water and with the designers and with city attorney on getting an intertie agreement. So that's just something that's gonna take a little bit of time, but we are moving through that at this point. We did not award that. I have to talk to to my engineer and find out what that date is because that needs to be updated. We did not award that in September. It just caught them. Red Drive Water Main, that is moving along very well. The contractor has finalized all their tests. They have paved the roadway, and so we are just going to do minor closeout items and be done with that one. So that's been a relatively easy project, fortunately. Ryan Street Lift Station Six, contractor is just finishing that. There was a hiccup because the generator that we've been waiting for for such a long time came and apparently it had the it had a broken part in the natural gas conversion area. So that had to be replaced. So we're then waiting for that. We're supposed to do startup last week. I need to verify that it was actually completed. But that's the only thing holding it up. If you were to drive down there today, you'd never know that it wasn't complete. Wood Hill Lift Station Twelve. That one also is moving along very well. Contractor is just finishing the final parts of it. They are about to have startup and move that forward. So I hope to be done with that one very soon. And then Murphy's Landing Marina Navigation Channel, just trying to iron out a few last things with the federal agencies. The latest was we were trying to make sure we were identifying the proper location for disposal of the spoils that come up from the dredging. Options included to discharge it into a spoils area in the Puget Sound that is designed for that and obligated for that. But that takes a whole nother level of permitting and mitigation. And so the question was, I think the estimate was seven hundred yards of spoils. Is it cheaper to bring the spoils up on land and truck them somewhere? Or is it cheaper to put them in the in the seabed of the Puget Sound somewhere and mitigate? So that's what we're working with consultant and the federal agencies on right now.
Jeff, a question on that. Do the federal agencies require an analysis of the spoils, chemical analysis, like heavy metals, PCBs, other things like that before they're disposed of?
Um, they do require a minimal level. I don't know what the actual testing parameters are, though. I can find that out.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Waystart, you're a plan up digester upgrades. That has been just kind of put on hold. We're just waiting for some materials and for some staffing to get realigned. We're moving on that one. Slip lining for Stinson Avenue and also for the storm slip lining down here in the Stormwater Project. That one, we're back underway with the design. We hope to finalize that design in-house and then get this project out to bid and awarded early next year, as you have probably seen, and is back into the next year's budget. So we'll move that one forward. And then lastly, utility rate study. Oh, I'm sorry. No, let me, I skipped right over Donkey Creek Daylighting. That's also known as the North Creek Culvert Replacement. That one also has a public outreach component. We have stakeholders that we've been talking with. We are going to be meeting with those stakeholders again here soon. We're trying to get that date set up. It would be a stakeholders and and staff discussion. We hope to have that either at the end of October or first part of November and then come to council with the alternatives with based on consultant's recommendation either late in November or early in With based on consultant's recommendation, uh, either late in November or early in December. So uh, that one is going to be coming soon. Uh, we're generally on target to complete all that, hopefully. But like I said, right by the end of Nov- November, first part of December. We have two alternatives. Um, a lot of it is up in the air on one of the alternatives based off of uh some direction that we're going to receive from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Pual tribe. And then lastly, utility rate studies, uh. I have not been able to get through the process like I'd really hoped. Uh, it's not because of our consultant. It's strictly because of me not being able to get through it. Um, I'll readily admit that. But we do need to have a conversation with the consultant and the public and the council in that order to complete the full rate study like we had talked about at the beginning, which is six years worth of setting rates. Uh, that said, I will be talking with uh Katrina Knudsen and Dave Rodenbach about an interim measure for twenty twenty-three only. Uh, that if based on those discussions, might be presenting something to council, hopefully end of November, first part of December. Okay, so uh, yes, Councilor Rodenber. Oh, you're on mute, Councilmember.
Can you hear us? You're, you're muted.
I apologize, Director at Myhelm. When I, you were going over the report. I was looking and trying to look at the timeline all at the same time. Could you briefly go over the timeline again? And let me know, let all of us know when exactly the permitting is expected to be finished and construction may begin.
Yeah, you bet. Um, we hope to have the design completed, receives all permits and be out to bid next spring, so a spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, and then we can award a project and hopefully have that project awarded before the end of spring. And then the contractor acquire materials, be ready for construction in summer of twenty twenty-three. That date on their uh design permitting goes through July fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, because the fish window opens July fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. So in theory, starting July fifteenth of twenty twenty-three, if we have awarded all permits in hand and the contract awarded, contractor just needs to do material acquisition and then start construction.
Thank you. So we'll be on, we'll be building a year from now.
Uh, that's the hope. Yeah, the hope, honestly, what's, it's October. The hope is that they'll be uh completed by now. I mean, if we have, if we're able to stay on track to have uh all the uh permits in early next year and then um, because that's what we're waiting for in design. We're just, we're not pushing forward design because we're we're waiting to hear back from the agencies before we do a ninety percent design submittal and even a hundred percent design submittal. Um, we've received input from the commercial fishing operators from uh the summer. And we need to get it back in front of them one more time. And then if we have any input from the agencies, we can wrap all that up and be ready. So if it wasn't for the just waiting on what the federal agencies want, I mean, we could be done with design before the end of this year. Oh, Councilor Rodenberg, you're on mute again.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Uh, Councilmember Barber.
Um, I have, um, one thing I just wanted to say, Jeff, I noticed as you were going through the entire report, it looks like you guys made a lot of progress in the last month, and I want to commend you and your team for I, I know you've had a lot of, shall we say, obstacles put in your way this summer. And um, please convey our thanks on behalf of the residents of the city for everything you guys have done. Um, it's truly amazing to see the checkmarks and the things moving off the sheet and stuff. So um, thank you to everyone. Um, I also had a question on Skancy Net Shed, and I, I just feel, I, I want to make sure that we're gonna, we're about to get into rainy season and possibly is hopefully not much of one, but maybe a snowfall or two. We are okay to make it through another winter with that roots. Question mark.
Question mark, yes. Uh, we have, our operations group is able to pat, literally patch it together to keep it uh from just rain falling in through the cracks. Um, the, other than the, I mean, the electrical is made to be pretty exposed. Uh, it's, the, the net shed's pretty tough.
Okay.
If, if, if it, if it, there's a lot of moisture inside, just from its location over the water, it gets a lot of moisture inside. Um, but yeah, we, we do recognize that we want to keep it dry inside, and we can patch it together to make it through uh until we can get this project completed.
Okay.
There might be a couple of times where we, we need to have conversations with Skancy Net Shed Foundation about what their, what events they're holding and, and other things. So yeah, if, but if there is prediction of a heavy snowfall, that might be a time where we just say nobody enters the building.
Thank you.
Yep. And I will pass it along. Yeah, we, we, in fact, Aaron and I just met this, this afternoon talking about uh what our new senior engineer's workload is going to look like when he starts uh the twenty-fourth. So um, there's a lot on this new person's plate. So uh, and then we talked about, well, now we need to get uh another associate engineer back out for advertising and uh just keep marching forward, because next two years doesn't look any slower.
Thanks so much, Jeff, for your presentation. Councilmember Henderson.
I just had a quick question, Jeff, um, related to the Phase One A on Burnham and the Culvert replacement at ninety-six. You know that PSC's uh placing some significant gas line right along in that area. Were those taken into account in the design? Because I remember when looking through it, I, I didn't see it, but I might have missed it.
No, they're taken into account. In fact, uh, every year at uh, at the, either at the very end of the year or the very beginning of the year, we have a utility coordination meeting. And we bring in Penn Light, Comcast, CenturyLink, Lumen, uh, PSC, and we say, here's what we're doing this year. You tell us what you're doing. And this was on our radar for a while, and they're very aware of our projects.
Cool, thanks.
I have to say, they have the friendliest flaggers. I wave at them, they wave back, they smile. Sometimes they wave at me before I wave at them. I'm like, oh, I'm impressed with their flaggers. I'm, and I'm passing them like three times. Maybe that's why, because I go by like four times a day.
Oh, it's her again.
Oh, we know you. All right, thanks, Jeff. And, and yes, I echo Councilmember Barber. Just you guys are, you guys are rocking it down there, even with short staff, so I appreciate all your hard work so much. Um, okay, well, we'll move on to our second discussion item, which is our youth council proposal. And this report comes to us from our city clerk, Josh Stecker. And we're looking forward to hearing about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm at home, and my connection isn't the best, but I think I've got this set up. All right, is my presentation coming through still?
It is.
Okay, great. All right, um, yeah, so council, um, I think some of you, uh, I see Councilmember Henderson has his hand up as give a question before we get started or? And, and go ahead and raise your hand or interrupt as I go along. If you have any questions, like come up during the presentation. But this, that this presentation is on the concept of the idea of having a Gig Harbor Youth Council. Um, I know it's something that's been brought up by uh Councilmember Liggins and Councilmember Starset. They've been kind of working on ideas uh for a youth council for a little while. Um, and we've had some preliminary discussions with the school district. Um, but we're kind of at the point now where we've been talking about what we want to see this uh youth council potentially look like. So today's presentation, I'm going to walk you through some of the um concepts and ideas that we've come up with, that we'd like to move forward with and just get your feedback on it. Um, so we started out, I, I did a little bit of research on different types of youth councils that are out there, and MRSC, of course, is a great resource for that. They have several examples that we've looked at, and they kind of, the structure of them run a pretty wide gamut of different types of opportunities and structures. But just to start off with, we wanted to talk about what the purpose of youth council is. Obviously, it's kind of like some of our other advisory boards, who provides input to council on items that are on your agenda that the city's dealing with currently. Um, they can also provide input to council on issues that are, that are youth feel are important. So if there are specific issues in the community that youth are dealing with, they can make it, they can make the city council aware of those. Um, this third bullet is probably uh, in my opinion, and, and maybe some of our council members agree, may be the most important, one of the most important reasons, um, is to educate our youth on how city meetings and city government functions. Um, we're gearing this towards high school students who are getting their first introduction to civics and government. And um, one of the things that often gets overlooked is how city government works. And I think having uh youth that are aware of how it works and knowledgeable about city government make for better participants as they get into adulthood. Um, and then finally, the, one of the things that the youth council can provide is letters of recommendations, certificates of um participation or volunteering uh and just acknowledgement um that can be really valuable to students as they go forward in their careers and um going on to college. So those are some of the key things that we've identified that, that would be what we want to seek him out of a youth council. Um, establishing a youth council, there's a few different ways to do it. Uh, the preferred method would be to establish it by some kind of an MOU with the school district. So not just the city taking this on of our own accord, but actually having a partnership with the school district who can reach out to the students and recruit the students um, and do a little bit of um management with uh, the youth that'll be involved, because that's really what school districts have experience with. And, and frankly, in the city, we, we don't have a lot of experience with that. Um, another option is that it could just be a, a program that's created by the direction of the mayor, so it can be completely administrative. Um, we can set it up, we can come up with the rules and how we want it to look. Um, we can do that all on our own. Uh, another option, and I've seen this with a few cities that MRSC um provided, is that it can be established, just like our other commissions, like the Parks Commission or the Planning Commission, where it's actually in the municipal code, and there's a lot of provisions uh for officially establishing a commission like that. You'll see, I've crossed this out on here, because I don't think this is something that, a direction we really want to go in. Um, we run into the same issues that we run into with our other advisory boards, so Public Records Act and open public meetings and email communications between members. And I think we, we really don't want to have kids, our students brought into that kind of minutia and that kind of keeping, keeping close tabs on them. So we, we don't really want to run into that kind of an issue. Um, who, who would be on a youth council? Uh, discussing those with Councilmembers Starset and Councilmember Liggins. Um, we don't want to go with the traditional advisory board where it's seven people appointed by the mayor. I think it would be better if, if it's open to anyone who wants to participate. So we're not limiting it to the seven, seven most favorite students that we come up with. If a student is out there and they're interested in doing a program like this, we want to make it available to them. Um, so high school aged, uh, for any peninsula school district school, so we're not limiting it to just Gig Harbor. Um, and then private school students and homeschool students who are also in that school district footprint. Uh, the structure of the youth council, there's, oh, I see Councilmember Barber has your hand up.
Sorry, Josh, I wanted to ask on the youth council and on this, on the, who's on the youth council. I'm assuming that you guys have all discussed this, but um, I'm curious about limiting it to just um residents of Gig Harbor or the greater Gig Harbor area, rather than the entire peninsula.
Um, that's certainly something we can discuss and, and put up for, you know, we can discuss that with the school district when we do an MOU with them.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of limiting it, but I just wanted to know if that had been discussed.
I think that when we talk about the peninsula school district, and I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure of what their, their district boundaries are, but when we get outside the peninsula, we're getting into an area where they don't have other cities that can, that they can partner with or support with. So then they have students there that, you know, they don't really have another city, they can go and do a program like this with, so.
That makes complete sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, I was just gonna echo those um same comments, Josh. We did talk about allowing it to be the greater school district, because if you have friends who want to do it together, a lot of people don't even know if they live inside the city limits or not. It's like, oh, I live on this block and I can do it, but you live, you know, in Canterwood, so you can't do it. So um, we just thought it'd be better to be more inclusive, to allow more people to um, you know, have the opportunity. So. Thanks.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, I just want to say, I love the idea of having it open to everybody. There's so many kids out there who run for a city council or, or um goodness, school council and don't make it, or kids that are shy and don't have the confidence to try. And I just think it's wonderful that we're giving everybody an opportunity, not, not just the same kids that are, you know, high achievers. So well done, I love it.
Yeah. And it may not be something where we're even really that vigilant about. If someone lives in Olala, you know, is outside of the school district and they want to participate, I, I don't know that we would be that particular about it. So, but that's something we can discuss as we go forward. Okay, so the structure of the council, we have uh we, we kind of talked about doing it as like a, a year-long program. So it starts with the school, the school year when it comes in and, and goes throughout the school year till, till summer break. Um, eight to ten monthly meetings in council chambers, so that, you know, students get the feel of what it's like to be in council chambers as, as it would be with a regular council meeting. Um, each meeting, we could explore a different city function and have uh staff function as uh guest presenters, so we can teach them about the police department and what happens in community development and how permits are processed and um, different things like that, so that they get a real feel for, for what the city is doing. Um, and then we could possibly have support from peninsula school district staff as, as part of that. And then with each meeting, we could also have a, a time period where we discuss the, the issues that are going on in the city and get the feedback from the, from the youth council on that. And that would be a time that would be probably I, ideal for um to have either the mayor or a council member present to kind of mentor them, mentor the council and, and show them you know, how, how a meeting is conducted and, and what kind of things go on in a council meeting. And then the other thing that I think is, is key is that we want this to be just for the students. We don't want this to be advertised as an open meeting. We don't want people to come in and scrutinize what's being done. We don't want it to be open to the press, where the press can come in and write about what's being done. Um, it should be, it should be for the students, and they shouldn't feel any kind of pressure or um, that, that the things that they're discussing are, are being scrutinized. Councilmember Starset.
Oh, never mind. I was actually jumping ahead, so uh, sorry, you could keep going, Josh. This is great. Thanks.
Yeah, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, this is neither a pro or con comment, but has anybody looked at how much time it would take from staff or administration for council members, since time is money? Uh, I'm just, and everything has a cost. And there's certainly a benefit in this, and it's probably worth the cost. But I, I, I'd like to see something that says it's going to take X amount of hours from staff, uh, council members, it's going to add another three hours a week to you, uh, and that kind of thing. So I would, I'd like to see that at some point in the development of this program.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something that we'll need to do to just kind of lay out what the, what the commitment's going to be. Um, as far as staff goes, I know, you know, a lot of our departments work, we, we do kind of have a routine for like how we uh, will reach out to different individuals and orient them on, you know, what, what the functions of our, our departments are, like the police department. Does their, their course, where they teach people, you know, how the police department functions. So I don't think we would, staff wouldn't necessarily be creating all of this from scratch. I think we have a lot of resources to go from. Um, but there definitely would be a time commitment that would be involved. Uh, Councilmember Liggins.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Um, this is great presentation so far. And um, Councilmember Rodenberg, in regards to your question, and Seth, you can add on to this as well. We talked about this when we were in planning meetings. And our thought was that we would have these eight to ten meetings, and at each meeting, so each department, let's say the first meeting's with the mayor, second meeting's with Public Works, the third meeting's with police, that each department would only have one meeting a month. Or I mean, a year. So it, as far as their time commitment, and then um council, I, you know, I'm happy with council member store set in the first year that we would show up to these meetings. Once a month, one of us would make sure that we're there um, to kind of mentor, and then we could rotate this role, kind of like we do with the other advisory boards. But we were really trying to make it so that it wouldn't be a huge output for staff. Like you said, being aware that their time is money. So yeah, and Seth, feel free to add.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I just echo your comments again, but um, you know, even though you're hearing uh Councilmember Liggins and my name. Yeah, I was just gonna, I just echo your comments again, but, um, you know, even though you're hearing, uh, Councilmember Liggins and my name. Being mentioned this lot from, from Josh, this is something that we see as a benefit to. You know, everyone on the council and we want everyone to be engaged. Even, you know, I wouldn't even say, like, I want to be engaged and see the progress and how this matures and grows. Um, but please feel welcome to be a part of this, even on the, a monthly or if there's a certain, you know, we can do a sign up like we did with Farmer's Market. Or Summer Sounds at Scanzy in a way, but we want the students to get to know all of our council members and see that we are different, but we can work together, right? That's a, that's a part of the big picture. Um, Josh also mentioned it earlier, but. Really wanting to build, you know, we're educating, the, at the same time, we're also trying to protect them from what might be hot issues, right? In Gig Harbor and not put them out there, um, and that type of way, really meant to engage. Hear from them and then create some like guidance of like, well, this is how, the best way to go about it, or these are the things that you need to research. And all of us have different strengths to be able to connect with them. So we talked about mentoring, uh, it's not just Brenda and I or Josh or Mayor Markley. But it is, um, it's really an opportunity for all of us. So it's one of those things. I don't want to say it's not, you're not being voluntold. You're strongly encouraged to. You know, support this and be engaged, but, uh, I also know that's a, we have a lot of time commitments, a lot of things we have to choose between, but. Uh, this is one that I know Brenda and I feel very strongly about. So hence why we're, we're pushing it. Thanks.
All right. Um, some other ideas we talked about, um, students can rotate roles on the council. Um, so at each of their meetings, they can elect a new mayor for that month's meeting and that way that, you know, they can. Get a little experience of actually sitting up on the dais and having conversations and seeing what it's like. Um, we can give them training and they can practice using parliamentary procedure, which could be a valuable skill for some of them in the future. Um, and give them opportunities to present to the council. So if they have something that they've discussed and they want to. Uh, nominate some from their group to come, actually come to a city council meeting and present to you, um, they have that opportunity. Um, and then again, the recognition at the end of the year that they completed the program and they've, uh, been, um. Participating with city government and, and giving that acknowledgement. Um, and then, uh, another thing that we talked about is having youth action days where we actually have. You know, one day a year where the youth are, are more involved than just that, that one meeting where they are actually contributing and being, being, uh. More of a volunteer type, uh, day. So that, that's another thing we can explore. And I think that is all I have for the presentation. And, uh, let's see, we've got a couple more questions and comments here. Uh, Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, um, Josh, first of all, thanks so much. I don't know if you all know this, but Josh has a teaching history. Um, and, uh, you taught history, correct, Josh, in the high school?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So pretty cool. And he's a parliamentary expert. So, um, this is, you know, it's just kind of a natural fit. But so, um, the Washington State Legislature has a, um, Legislative Youth Action Committee. And once a year before session, uh, they invite youth councils from all over the state to a day of action. I know that the Lakewood Youth Council goes several people and they actually get to go and work and help write legislation and get involved. And do whatever they want to do. Um, so that would be something that the youth could be involved if they wanted to. Um, but I just want to echo again, also, you know, what Seth said, we want to. Give them the opportunity to, if they want to dive deep into something, or if they want to have a parks, you know, be a part of doing the parks day. But kind of protect them and, and let them choose, you know, some projects that, that might be helpful to the city. So, thanks.
Great. Councilmember Barber.
I, I just want to say I'm really excited about this program. I think that it's how we make, um, engaged, active citizens. As they become adults and voting age. I remember as a child serving as a page in the Oregon State Legislature and, you know, certain things like that as you. Grew up kind of in the informal system. And I think that that's how. It's easier for a lot of kids to learn that way rather than sitting in a classroom and listening to a lecture. So I'm really excited about this program starting.
Thank you, Josh, so much for this presentation and for Councilmember Liggins and Starce bringing this forward. It is, I'm so excited about this. I think it's the coolest thing for the city to do and, um. These are our future leaders and how awesome for them to understand well in advance what city government is like and then. Hopefully even spread that excitement to their parents and their grandparents and, and really get them all involved. So, Councilmember Starce.
Yeah, Tracy, I think it's going to create a lot of synergy. Still a bit of my words there, but, you know, these students that could be on here could be sitting in our seats someday. Or a member of our staff and, or future mayor. Uh, or maybe more, maybe they will, you know, some of these, these kids will, uh, take a, a real passion for it. And I think we can help them, you know, succeed. There is so much more too that we have talked about that's not all in here. Things that you would be excited about. One thing I will mention is. You know, we're talking, we've talked a lot about, we need to follow up on is our sister cities. Um, and how, what a great experience to. Not just learn about, you know, your US laws and how government works, but to have an opportunity to go to Norway and do an exchange, you know, and, and bring those. Those groups back and forth. So I think it's going to be amazing. I wish it existed when I was a kid. Um, I would have, you know, I don't know that I would have done it, but now in hindsight. It sounds awesome. So I'm, I'm glad to sit here so much excitement about it and it'll continue to develop. And yeah, it's good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Redenberg.
Yes, uh, you know, speaking of students, someday sitting on our seats. Uh, it might not be that long because I don't know how many of you were here when county, uh. Derek Kilmer actually ran for city council when he was eighteen years old. Eighteen or nineteen, so, and he won. So it would be a possibility that, uh, these, these young people are on council sooner than we think.
They're vying for our seats. Is that what you're saying?
Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, um, so Derek Young, um, who is the county councilman. Um, he didn't, he was on Gig Harbor City Council at the age of eighteen. And matter of fact, he's one of the first speakers. That we thought of inviting to come and talk to them. So as kind of, you know, as. As somebody who could inspire them to what they can do. So that's awesome. Thanks, Lee.
That's great. All right, well, so much more to come on this and this is, this is super exciting. So. Um, it's a beautiful day out there. It's four o'clock. I say we adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Have a great night, everybody.